At this time, I'd ask Mr. Meyer, city or county administrator, with any comments or recommendations throughout the closed session.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you heard a bit of a summary in the closed meeting regarding the status of some of these suits that have been filed against the township, as well as the action that the county took in terms of seeking a surety bond, which was ordered by the court. And so, as a result of the discussion, staff are recommending that the board consider passing a resolution that would authorize attorneys on behalf of the county to protect our interests and intervene in the current suit between Patrick A. Leese and Lynn M. Kuzman Leese versus Mankato Township. And so, ask the board to make a motion and pass a resolution supporting that action on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I don't have any questions or comments, Mr. Chair.
No comments.
Just to be clear, this would allow the county to intervene into that particular lawsuit and seek some remedies on behalf of the county because currently, the county is not named as a defendant in that suit, but our interests need to be addressed and protected.
Absolutely.
A lot of public dollars, tax dollars involved with this, okay? You've heard the motion in the second. Is there any other discussion?
Sure.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the resolution to intervene in the suit is approved. We will now move to, on our agenda, item number 11, Public Works bids, and ask Mr. Prestash to come forward with some remarks whenever you're ready, John.
You can join us up here, John.
Whenever you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, thank you, Commissioners and staff, for having me this morning. I'm here today to present the first five bid proposals for approval by the county board. As you are all aware, there is a pending lawsuit which a bond has been posted. However, due to the softening of the market with these upcoming elections, bidding at the optimal time of year, which we're currently doing now, trade contract negotiations that are scheduled for next spring, and a lot of work that's happening in the surrounding community, and particularly in Rochester with Mayo Unbound, that we don't believe that the bond will cover your interests financially by delaying this process. So, I would ask that you consider approving the following bids contingent upon permits being issued for the project. And we'll go through the results of each, but it would be for the earthwork and utilities, the precast concrete, the salt and sand storage facility, testing and inspection services, and building commissioning.
Mr. Chair, I might just kind of echo what Mr. Prestash is saying. You know, we submitted information to the court that was higher than the $1.2 million bond that was ultimately approved by the courts. Just given sort of movement in the market, even in the recent weeks, we are concerned that that level of bond will be insufficient if we are delayed, and so that's why staff are bringing forward this recommendation to consider these bids at this time.
I would just ask, I'm not as familiar with the Rochester project and stuff, but that could involve same contractors, or certainly, there's going to be a lot of work being done there as well, correct?
Yeah, it's a $5 billion project, and so, you know, maybe there's just a lot of impact of just tradespeople in the marketplace. So, you know, a lot of the same firms may not be working directly on your project. However, those larger companies that might be working on the Mayo Unbound are also trying to recruit, and it kind of becomes a kind of a price war for labor to some degree. It's kind of what we're anticipating seeing. It's kind of an unprecedented project in the entire United States, so we're really worried about the impact that that could have on your project.
So, we're having a price war at the time of contract negotiations with those tradesmen?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the bond award that they gave us through the court system. At least, it's an effort to cover some of our costs if we have lost too, so.
You're absolutely right. We were pleased that a bond was ordered, but we continue to have some concern whether it'll be sufficient if we are delayed, you know, a whole year, which could be the case, the way the court dates are lined up.
All right. Any other questions? The first package is the earthwork and utility package, so bids were received on September 12th. We had very good coverage on that package. We had several different firms from the area that bid on the work. The recommended award is to Dirt Merchant. They are a local firm, which is great. The base bid amount of $5,069.13. The construction manager's project budget for that scope was $4,724,452, so it is slightly over budget, but we do feel like there was very good coverage, and we feel like that's kind of the going rate for the work that we're recommending to award here.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
And I think I would just clarify that that is contingent on permits being issued.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think that's important, that every one of these bid packages, we have that as a condition.
Dirt Merchant does a good job for us in this area.
Yeah, not only are they local, we've had good experience.
Do we need to add the contingency on that?
Yeah, we can make sure we have that in the minutes, because I believe that was your motion, Chris Brunder, so we'll capture that in the minutes.
All right, the next pack.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
On this? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bid is awarded to Dirt Merchant.
Thank you. Next package is the precast concrete package, so this makes up your structure of the building. It's the walls, it's the roof structure, all the columns. So, this building is almost entirely precast on the structure, so this is a big, important package for you to consider. We did let this package as a best value package, so the award was kind of based on past performance, price, expertise. There's a value-add submittal and a kind of a risk plan. And so, we did only get one quotation or one proposal on the precast, but in this particular market, there's only two or three people that are large enough in the state of Minnesota that typically bid on these, so we knew the coverage would be small, and we also feel like we got a very competitive bid. So, the budget for this work was $4,557,889, and the proposal from Wells that we are asking for your approval today is an amount of $4,97,105, and they scored 94.8 out of 100 possible points on the best value selection.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation?
I would move this in contingent of receiving the permits.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion.
They'll do a fine job for us also.
Yeah. Somewhat local.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bid awarded for the precast best value package goes to Wells Concrete for the amount of $4,097,105.
All right, thank you. Next package is the salt and sand storage facility. So, on this particular package, we are recommending a cooperative purchase for this package. We're recommending the award to Greystone Construction. I mean, the amount of $560,500. The budget that we had established for that work was $598,425, so it is slightly under budget, and we'd like your approval to move forward with that bid as well.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and I never assume anything as a chair, but contingent.
Contingent on the permission, yes.
Okay.
It got seconded so quick, I missed it.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The bid is awarded to the salt and sand storage facility is to Greystone Construction in the amount of $560,500.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a professional service agreement that has two portions to it. So, the first portion is the code-required testing and inspection. So, they would do things like testing concrete for strength, checking, you know, the earth for compaction rates and those kinds of things that are required per the building permit and per the code. So, we're recommending award to Braun InterTech in the amount of $98,700 on the testing and inspection portion. The budget for that scope of work was $97,905, so very close to what we anticipated. And the second part of that is, they also do a service called exterior envelope commissioning, which is a new requirement of the Energy Code that we have a third-party consultant to review the exterior envelope to make sure that you can have a continuity in your vapor barrier, that you don't have any leak kind of deal. So, they do a third-party review, and they also do some window testing as part of that process. And so, the second part of that award is recommended to Braun InterTech in the amount of $25,100, and the budget for that scope of work was $30,000. So, all told, we're looking for an approval to award those two packages to Braun InterTech in the amount of $123,800. And I should just note that Braun was selected as a professional service consultant based upon the fact that they did the geotechnical work on the project, and so, it always seems to be a good practice not to switch firms at that point, that there might be some different recommendations, that kind of thing. So, we recommend award to Braun today.
I move approval upon acceptance of the building permit.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bid will go to Braun InterTech for the amount of $123,800.
All right, thank you. The last recommended award today is also a consultant professional service agreement for building commissioning. And so, the building commissioning is also an Energy Code requirement. It involves a third party that gets involved during the design phase and peer reviews the mechanical and electrical systems and their design, and then also follows that through construction to make sure that there's another set of eyes, making sure that it gets installed properly. And then, there's a checkout and testing phase at the end of the project so that, you know, your large investment in your mechanical, electrical systems here are working properly and checked out by not only me and Carl Anderson as the construction manager, not only by the mechanical engineer, but also by the third-party commissioning agent, that that's kind of purely their scope of work and their focus. So, we had a budget for that scope of work of $95,000. We did receive four quotations ranging from $79,900 to $148,000, and we're recommending award to KFI Engineers in the amount of $79,900. So, under budget on that particular package.
I would move approval in contingent to receiving the building permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The low bid is accepted from KFI Engineers in the amount of $79,900.
Okay, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thanks for all your help.
On our agenda, we are to item number 12, tab number 13, Human Services. Mr. Clausen, would you join us, please?
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Phil. Good to see everyone. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have three action items that I'd like to bring before the board for approval. The first is those being in the financial assistance unit, and specifically, an addendum to a contract with MRCI. We have a current contract with MRCI for employment services, and you'll see in the narrative that that is primarily for Minnesota Family Investment Program, MFIP, or Diversionary Work Program, DWP, how we refer to those two programs. This addendum is to expand that between now and the end of the year for anyone at 200% of poverty or below, and this is a permissible service. Based on our budget and some of our unwinding efforts, we're able to expand this for a few months. It is a way to promote competitive employment in our community. There is no financial impact to this addendum, and it would be valid, as I said, through December 31st of '24 this year.
Second item.
Let's do, these are not all really the same kind of three different areas. Let's do them one at a time, if we could, just so we make sure they're adequately addressed.
I'll move it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, item number two, public health. Title V, maternal and child block grant that we receive is a federal and state partnership. The purpose is to improve the health and well-being of mothers and children, and it does include special healthcare needs with the child and helps support their family as well. This is serviced through our public health nursing staff, and the amount is $62,556 annually, which is a 4% increase over the last award. It is a two-year grant, so double that amount. Term is October 1st of '24 through September 30th of '26.
Okay, what are your wishes?
I'll move approval.
And a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. It is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, last item for action under administration is an appointment for our Social Services Task Force. This is an individual volunteering to participate in the task force. Name is Kylie Cameridis and resident of Commissioner District Two.
You've heard the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The Social Services Task Force appointment is made.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move on to my informational and discussion items. There are four listed here, all being very important, but I'll move through the information fairly rapidly. If there's any questions, please stop me, and I will attend to those questions. The first area is licensing for adult foster care. These are really kind of snapshots of what we do, and licensing adult foster care, very important to the infrastructure of our community. You'll see the six areas that can be served through foster care, developmentally disabled, physical disabled, brain injury, chemical dependency, mental illness, and the elderly. In the boxes, you'll see that the corporate adult foster care, so any foster care that's licensed as an agency, LSS, Harry Myring, Elm Homes, different places like that, would be corporate foster care, and then you'll see a smaller section of adult foster care. That's where people take individuals into their home. So, those are the two different kind of pictures of how we serve people in foster care. 119 corporate adult foster homes and 398 beds for capacity, and then you'll see the smaller picture of family adult foster care and 14 beds. Right now, we do have some open beds. Often, people will serve individuals they know a little more of a specific mission with the family foster care. The next slides give a picture of trend lines, which are fairly stable growth in our overall bed capacity, in the number of homes and the beds for especially corporate, and a pretty flat picture with some reduction in the number of beds offered in Blue Earth County for the family foster care. Also, a regional picture, just for the board's information. Corporate foster homes in Region Nine, total capacity of homes is 283, and almost 1,000 beds, 958 beds that are available through corporate foster care in the region. Family adult foster care, 19 homes, and just shy of 50 beds available in that service. So, maybe take just a breath there. Any questions on the foster homes on the adult side of our mission? Hearing non-adult protection unit, also a very core area of our services, and I'll walk through again quickly the bullet points. 503 reports were screened in in 2023. 22% of, I'm sorry, were reported and screened, and then 22% of those were screened in for investigation. That number is down 8% from 2022. The staff really emphasized the complexity of some of these cases, and the amount of time per case is going up significantly. The state does have a priority on trying to screen in more cases. That is not a direct one-to-one relationship because there's criteria and other things that we process, but certainly, we'll be talking about that more in the short term. Adult protection, agency determination, 16% substantiated, and all, 60% of all those substantiations were regarding financial exploitation. So, either somebody that works in a fiduciary role where they're in charge of the money, or they're not in charge of the money, but still, there was an infraction and concern about financial exploitation. 38% proved to be false, and the major areas there, again, financial exploitation, also caregiver neglect. 31% of the reports were proven to be inconclusive, and some of these titles, you know, have to kind of be thought through as far as what they're trying to say, but that we really couldn't, we had facts and information to review, but we could not make a final conclusive determination in 31% of the cases, and then 15% were determined unable to be able to make a determination, and that might be because we either couldn't gather the information, or there were technical reasons that we couldn't decide that they fit into one of the other categories, a lack of information. You'll see the note at the end. No determination with a case plan is another option that we're afforded now, which we certainly appreciate in that we can say that there's no determination of maltreatment, but we can still help the person and develop a case plan. So, often, this is getting them into case management, you know, kind of those situations that are complex. A self-neglect, I think, is kind of emphasized here where somebody might not be taking care of themselves, but they're open to receiving more services so that they can be taken care of, and that's an excellent solution, a very efficient solution for us. The boxes and tables were referenced in the narrative. You'll see the reduction in the number of reports in the first table. Table two, that fall off from our screened-in reports, which we know will be an area of focus, and then finally, a breakout into those categories that we talked about in table three of how those determinations were made based on the facts we had available to us. Couple more areas of importance, child protection, and you'll see the numbers the staff are reporting, that overall, they're fairly stable, meaning that our picture of services are pretty consistent year over year, with a lot of concerns embedded in those data sets. We're now fully staffed, about half of our staff have over 10 years' experience, and they helped train in new staff this last year. We had four new staff. It is a hard area to train, as you can imagine, and it's also a hard area to retain people because it is a high burnout area, as you can imagine. Out-of-home placement data is also included in the board packet. There was a decrease in children entering out-of-home placement in 2023. My emphasis will always be that second bullet. Parental drug use remains consistent, primary reason. You know, every chemical's involved, but alcohol is certainly always near the top. We always try to reunify the person back to their parents, so that's our number-one outcome, followed by adoptions when necessary. Obviously, there's a very good and celebratory side to adoptions, which we appreciate, but the child obviously goes through a lot in that process as well. Most children are still placed in foster care, but that has decreased from '22 to '23, from 51% to 36%. And then, as I think the board is aware, we've had a lot more residential treatment, going up from 6% in '22 to 26% in '23. The thing we always have to assure, what we're hoped for, is stability. When we have to go out of state to find stability, it makes everything just a lot harder. And going to that more soft side of the approach, what it tells the child is that they cannot stay at home. We don't have the services in our community to serve that child, and they get shipped away. I think there's trauma involved in that every single time, and then we have to bring them back and transition them back. So, the lack of resources in this regard is a top priority. Everyone knows about it, and we need to come up with some solutions in the short term. High-needs children, what staff emphasizes is just how much is going on for them, and they really can't, I mean, the truth is, is even when we find a bed, and there's a note there about calling all over the nation trying to find a bed, we often place kids and then they run from the placement. So, it's just a very, very unstable situation, and you feel like you're working backwards. I think I shared with the board that one of our miners broke into a car dealership, stole a car, and now charges are pending about all that. So, you know, it's a situation that is very bad and unstable and can become worse, so. The pie charts, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. The number of children entering, again, with the chemical needs represented in that first graph, the expenditure percentages, foster care, residential treatment, and corrections, all very well-represented as far as cost centers for us. The reason, I mean, the placement for exiting is first with reunification with the family, and then second with adoption, as previously mentioned. We do feel this is a strength still, this last piece where of the people placed, of the children placed into foster care, 64% were placed with relatives or kin. That is our duty, I mean, it is part of our mission to always place with the family when we can, and we've been successful most of the time. All of these areas, I know I moved through them quickly, but are very critical to our mission and very hard to serve in a lot of ways, and I know the board has been extremely supportive of us and staff doing this work, so thank you for that.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Phil.
See you.
Yes.
Have a good afternoon.
That concludes today's agenda. I would entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are recessed, 11:47. We are reset, 11:47.